Can the clerk please take roll?
Klein.
Here.
Kinek.
Here.
Hojel.
Here.
Roder.
Here.
Stay.
Here.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Open it up to public comments. If anyone has anything they wish to speak about. Tanya?
Well, I want to thank you guys for the wonderful plan. So, and I apologize to previous mayor and council, I didn't get one of them like this. It was very nice, thank you. And I want to thank you all for having an open house for me for retirement and make a lot. I didn't think anybody showed, but a lot of people did. It was great, and I appreciate it. And I have enjoyed working with you guys in the past, council, the mayor. And this is my second time back, so you know I must have enjoyed being here. And that tells you a lot. There's a lot of good people in Swisher, and I'm gonna miss you all. The good and bad, everything. You know, I won't miss the work necessarily. And just kinda recap a few things. We created our Swishers Farmers Market. Our creating committee was Alzlin Hart, Laura Hoover, Bob Krug, and Adrian Orenman. And to hopefully start economic development and try to do it where the people come eat there. And we've been doing this for many years. Years, I think so. It's still going and trying to make it a family night, too, so the library programs and stuff, too. So, I hope they keep going. It was something we all just volunteered for. And say, "That would be a good idea." And the council's been very supportive, so I hope you guys will be in the future. In my last 10 years, as there's been several projects, been busy with that Division Street project. We did save a million dollars in lost money starting that project with the council map. That was great. Also made it the TIF area to help pay for part of the project. We were able to save, pay out the sewer bond eight years early, and save a lot of money in interest, which is great. So I'm gonna chew my horn on this a little bit, too, with you guys' approval and everything. And we all remember to raise your own, and I hope to God we never have another one of those things. Because we finally just finished up for most part the paperwork on that. And I had gone through five, well, the city had gone through five Public Works Superintendent's assignment. I've been here the last 10 years. I hope this doesn't happen anymore to you guys. And it wasn't me, I did not chase them away, so do not think it was for me. There were several other projects in that, but I did enjoy it. And some were a challenge, some were, but that's okay. I enjoyed all, I enjoyed the people. I hope you guys pass the law selection this year when we bring it up. It has, it's been paying for the Division, helped paying for the Division Street project. We were able to do, on roads, we did a drainage thing, and that was quite a bit of money. And it really helps for the community, because the way the state keeps cutting us, we get, you need to get it ways you can, because... And I hope the development goes well. This will definitely help Swisher, too. But in closing, I'm enjoying being of service and caring for the community at Swisher. But I feel you are in very good hands with Shelley, because she's great. So, and she says it right on, and I love it. She's on vocal, and I love it. I think it's great. And I'm gonna be starting a new journey for retirement, and I'm looking forward to it. But I wish you guys all the best in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not the stakeholder listening.
You're not, Kay?
We have to make sure you stop them. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, I live at 1167 Gable Avenue, Swisher, Iowa. My name's Zach Gorman. I live right across from the post office, from the first farmhouse up. As we get ready to develop the land down here, I went to permit the road for chemical. I put hardener on it, because we've had this discussion about how much traffic comes through Swisher up that road, which is not, not the issue. The issue will become, how are we gonna put the construction machinery? Where are we entering that property from? And I'm gonna put chemical on it again, out of my pocket, to harden that road. Are you guys gonna be sending all the construction equipment up that road, plus all the traffic for the house building, right off this new development here?
Phase one doesn't go on Gable. The only thing that's been approved is phase one.
Perfect. How are we getting in there?
Eventually.
On Division.
Eventually.
Eventually.
But those have not been approved yet.
Okay. So, how are we gonna handle when I put chemical on it and you guys tear it up?
That's the way roads work. People drive on them, even construction vehicles.
I understand that. I mean, construction, I understand that. But that's not, I mean, we've had this issue before where we've done this road out here, and then I told you guys, even with the engineer, hey, you're gonna run traffic up the road. They said, "No, absolutely, we're not going to, we're gonna divert it." And I said, "That's insane, that's the easiest way to get to Cedar Rapids. We're not gonna not use the road." I understand that. But how are we gonna help your neighbors?
And that is something at that time we can look into, and you can absolutely come back when we have agenda items, and we can discuss at that point. But we can't really discuss anything right now about what we're going to do in the future.
I would like you to take a look at it, and at least think about it ahead of time, because I will be back, right? This is not, it won't go away.
We can discuss it with the developer.
Yeah.
So, where do you say they're gonna come off of Division Street, isn't it, into that development?
Yes, for phase one.
They're working off of Gable now, aren't they?
Yeah.
They're there now, aren't they?
Yeah, they're coming from Gable.
It's already been approved, remember?
Yeah, I know, but we're probably gonna start now.
Eventually, they'll extend ours, that's what they're gonna do.
Eventually.
Probably, so they'll probably work to do something there, more access.
Yeah, but in the time being, when they have to get into the thing, they're gonna have to come off of Gable. They can't come off of Division, so there's gonna be a lot of project.
To start, to start with a, well, yes.
But that's a lot of project.
We can talk with...
Regardless, this is not an agenda item, we cannot discuss it.
Right. Right.
We can talk about it.
No.
I'm just saying.
This is not an agenda item.
We could talk to the developer.
We can definitely discuss it with the developer, we can put it on a future agenda.
That's what I asked.
We can absolutely talk about it at that point, but council cannot discuss tonight.
We're good. That's why I asked you to discuss it. I know what you have to do. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
But it does need to be discussed, because I've asked for this before, and you guys told me, "Yeah, yeah, we're good." So no, I don't quite believe it. You know what I mean? I'm just telling you, I don't quite believe it, because it's not what happened last time. I told you it wasn't gonna happen, and it didn't happen. So, yeah, I would like you guys to discuss it, because you don't take care of... You guys will admit, you guys don't take care of that road. You don't have anything to do with it, but you wanna use it for your development, which is not quite fair, because I maintain the road, and you don't. Johnson County maintains the road, and you don't.
We have an agreement with Johnson County.
Oh, perfect, I know you do.
Yeah.
That they maintain it, and I maintain it, but you do not. But you wanna use it for your construction.
Well, it's a public property.
The developer wants to use it to access his properties to do the development.
Yeah, I understand.
That's not the city doing that, that's the contractor doing this development.
You allow the...
For that, okay. What I would suggest, I'm gonna suggest this. Can you get with the clerk and put this on an agenda for our meeting in the future here? And we will get ahold of the contractor, and we can take up your concerns with him.
Yeah, they seem pretty open, yeah.
And possibly talk, talk this out. Right now, we, they're right, we cannot sit here and discuss it.
Yeah.
And, 'cause it's not an agenda item. But if you would get this on an agenda, we could have the developer or a representative from him come here, and we can talk this out.
That will work for me. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other help or comment? All right. There is a consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion, we approve consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries? Number six, Catalyst Building Remediation Program Grant Support. We wrote the letter that we do for the Catalyst grant from the city. It is in your packets, if you have any questions on it.
Motion to approve, main letter of support, second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Annexation procedures are in there. You'll see there are further agenda items where we will talk about annexations.
Yeah, I just put the procedures on, I just wanted you to be aware of, you know, what the steps. Yeah, in case you had to.
Like, we're on step two.
We're on step, basically, one, two, yeah. And this isn't even, I mean, this isn't even really the full step. It's like, more like two pages of, well, it has to be done by the clerk. So, I just, I just wanted the council to be aware.
Okay.
It is an extensive process. We gotta make sure we follow correctly.
And then with the fringe, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Then with the fringe area agreements, I just wanted you to be aware that, you know, there are the two fringe area agreements, one with Shoeyville, and then the new one with the City of Cedar Rapids and Johnson County. Shoeyville's, there's, there's no issue, since it's on the west side of Interstate 380. With the Cedar Rapids and Johnson County one, I put in a couple maps showing that it sits in Area 1, and then kind of the detail of what happens in Area 1. And so, it basically just needs to kind of go to the county, since it's in the county for their...
But since it's already tagged as the Swisher Growth Area in the fringe area, it should be fine, right?
The Swisher Growth Area, what are you talking about? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that's that area one, I was talking about. Correct. Yep, so nothing has to go to Cedar Rapids.
Does council have any questions on the annexation procedures for the fringe area procedures? It is something you can ask later as we go through this process. All right, so then, nine, we have an application for voluntary annexation. Can we do that in ten together?
Sure. All right, so maybe... Other than like your, since there are two separate parcels, may discuss together is fine. If you're, either way, if you're gonna refer or not refer to the P and Z board, please make those separate, so I can record it separate.
Yeah. So we have two sections that want to do voluntary annexation. This would not create an island, because the property across the street is already Swisher. So we aren't running into any sort of issues. We, I did ask her to put in the map showing all of the properties between the two sections on the north side. This could be a time we ask those owners if they want to annex in at the same time, because it's not an island, we don't have to do an involuntary annexation. It could just be a, this is a good time to do it, if you wanted to be part of the city, kind of to council.
Slip property right to the south, that's in city?
Yeah.
It's been in city.
So that orange line represents the Swisher city limits. I know it's kind of hard to tell, because I did an outline in red of those properties in between city limits.
This one down.
But the orange line represents Swisher city limits right now.
So that whole field is city limits, too?
Yep.
The field to the south. Yeah. Yeah, yes.
Oh, and Harrow Road.
Yep.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
So, no island worries. We could reach out to the other residents if the council wants to, and see if there are other properties that want to annex in all at the same time.
I was told by a couple of folks in visiting, with one being a P and Z member, is that there's, there's probably no interest from some of the residents between, or the property owners between, so...
They're probably, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We also talked about reaching out.
Hoover's not in city limits?
That's correct, not.
Because the only issue would be if Krugs did.
I know.
Then Hoover would create a...
Correct.
Maybe we would have to force them.
Yes, you're gonna ask that at a point.
I don't think Krugs would be interested. I don't think they would, but I think we have to ask them. But that could be an issue that we would run into, is if Krugs want to, and Hoover doesn't.
And then we would have to...
I think it would hurt.
...talk about options at that point.
Well, basically, we'd have to do what we did up on the hill.
Right.
Force them.
So if sheely and Deegan's land was annexed into Swisher, then we'd have to run sewer out to them?
No.
No.
No, just because your annexed property in does not acquire you.
There is something that comes into play with this, though, and it has to do with Division Street.
Actually, it doesn't. She looked into that. Yeah.
I do.
I checked, when, after we spoke, Mike, and Mike and I spoke about it, because he came into the office and picked up his laptop. I did pull Iowa code on annexations, and Iowa code allows, and even right in the definitions, it talks about adjoining. Adjoining means having a common boundary for not less than 50 feet. But land areas may be adjoining, although separated by a roadway or waterway.
Really?
Yeah.
So the road could stay county, so we don't have to run into the financing.
And that's where I was a little concerned, I know we spoke about it, because there's an agreement with the county on Division Street.
Or when we did Division Street.
Yep, that says that, that there will be no annexations on any of the, and there's a few segments on the Division Street project. On segment two or segment three, no annexations of property north of Division Street, without reimbursing the county 10% of the cost, of the actual cost that they had, would have had in improving Division Street. And then it's prorated based on the number of years you're into it, and it goes for 10 years. And we haven't even accepted the project yet. So, that time, 10 years hasn't even kicked in yet.
So that, that was just something I wanted everybody aware of.
Yeah.
So they live with their own sewer system and everything?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yep. They would accept it. We did also throw around the idea of approaching the fire department and asking them, because they've mentioned it here and there, see if they wanted to annex in also, as long as we're doing an annexation, just because it's a lot of work.
So, so what's the benefit to Deegan and Sheely to annex into Swisher, then? Because there's gotta be, obviously, they've got...
Because they asked for it.
I said, "What's the benefit?" I didn't ask you, they asked for it. I said, "What's the benefit?"
Our representative, great, Steve?
I'm Steve Seltrich with Scoville and Rinty.
Okay.
And I'm representing both parties, Deegan and Sheely, this evening. The benefit to them is that they get to function under your jurisdiction, as opposed to the county. And for the future growth of this community, that's where the council needs to be looking into the future as to what's gonna pay dividends or benefits going forward.
What would be the benefits to the city?
You're gonna...
TIP money, too.
TIP money, taxation.
So where's the tax money go? If it's not annexed, then does it go to the county, then?
Yes.
Well, basically, the city gets nothing right now. And it would continue to get nothing. If it's annexed, then the city would gain some, obviously, some value, some improvement value. And then whatever tax rate you, that assessed value is what the city would receive.
So then if it's annexed into the city, and it gets developed, say there's 10 lots on Deegan's, I'm just using a number, you know, or whatever. So like, after that, then, since it's annexed into Swisher, then do we take care of all the roads and everything afterwards?
Yes.
Like we have to with the development, like, now? But like, if it's...
If the fringe road?
No, the, the roads in, in the actual development. Obviously, you're, obviously, they're trying to develop it.
In the event it privately developed, it could have a private road designation, which they would have to maintain their own roadways.
But that's not probably gonna happen.
I can't answer that, because I don't know.
My, my thoughts are on this, that we could refer this to P and Z and have them look over this, and look over the, all the where and within of this, and maybe come back with some recommendations. My main concern was, again, like, what the cost would be involved for the city if we, we had reimbursed the county for certain things, and what we'd have going forward. I would, I would consider, too, like you said, maybe reach out to some of the other property owners around these parcels, and find out what their thoughts are, if they're interested or not interested in annexation. I pretty much know, and think you're gonna get a no, but it wouldn't hurt to reach out and talk.
The question I have is the, I'll call it farm ground directly to the south, it's already annexed in.
Yes.
Don't know when that timeframe occurred, but also what costs were supposedly given back to the city for road maintenance, if any? If I understand what you're saying, as concerned about...
If I had to guess, it annexed in, in 2006, when they were thinking about developing it. We found that developers agreement, but the property ended up never developing, it just stayed farmland. So I would guess it's probably been that long.
Gonna.
Yeah, for the last 20 years. So, the next step would be to refer them to P and Z. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Assistant Chief with the Department.
Yeah.
And the reason I gave up here is we saw the annexation. I would ask for annexation, like, two years ago.
Yes.
And I think the road was a major concern, which is why I didn't go through last time. But I think we might be interested in it.
Yeah, and we didn't check, because yourself, you don't hit the county agreement with the Division Street project. So we could annex you guys in, and it doesn't even hit the county worry level.
Okay.
So Shelley can definitely be in contact, and you guys are, I assume, need to talk to your board.
Yeah.
And figure out if you wanna do that, but do a chunk all at the same time.
And I think the benefit, honestly, is that it changed our stuff back from 25 feet to like 5 feet. So, we have trade facilities we like to build, and I think the more stuff back, we have the better.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be nice to see you guys grow.
Yeah, for sure.
And I do have the completed applications for both.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that.
I think, sorry if I can't.
Oh, yes.
I think the other concern that's kind of common amongst the department is we're concerned about Cedar Rapids just continuing on down 965, and eventually just cutting our fire district enough.
Right.
You know?
Right.
Would like to see that not happen.
Right. But all those... Dad would probably be very difficult for you.
We'd like to see that not happen, either.
Yeah.
Really, if they annex in, it only gives us more control over their properties, right?
Right.
Because right now... Well, the services we could provide is... But I'm saying, right now, let's say Deegan and Sheely both wanted to fully develop it, they're just in our fringe, right? So we really have no control.
Right.
But if they're in our city limits...
And all the TIP money and future tax money would go to the county rather than us. Where we could use that to grow.
Since, since, again, since they're in Area 1, which is city's juris, basically, let's just call it city's jurisdiction, they would still abide by the city code.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's within that fringe area agreement, in Area 1, that the agreement states is under the city's jurisdiction.
Gotcha.
So regardless of being in or not, they're gonna have to follow city code for development.
So, what do we, what needs to be done tonight?
Just a referral. You either say, "We want, we do want to refer this to planning and zoning," or "we do not." And if it's not, then there's no consideration to annex.
Motion to revert...
Or her procedures, we gotta keep the two separate.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
Yeah.
Motion to revert Deegan annexation request to P and Z.
Sir.
Discussion. Any further discussion on this?
Any further discussion on the first one?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Motion to refer Sheely annexation request to P and Z.
Sir.
Any discussion?
Well, then, Sheely's, he's, he has to come back to 120, he has 40 acres just way, way to the north. Does he have, I see, he had, used to easement, does he have a permit access to the 40 acres back there? Do you know? Is that Deegan's? Is that Deegan's land?
Mm-hmm.
Is it Deegan's now? Originally, it was, it was just easement, years ago.
And that's an easement between Deegan and Sheely.
Right.
And I don't have that documentation, but I have been told that there is an agreement in place.
It's probably, probably Deegan and Chausseeck.
Yeah, that's who would own it.
That's who would own it, that's who would own it. Sheely forgot, got the easement that time.
Well, according to the Lynn County, or, I'm sorry, the Johnson...
That's what I'm asking, it's what you're doing now.
The Johnson, the Johnson County assessor site, there is a strip that has direct access on, so it's not an easement. It's, Sheely owns that portion.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, because originally it was an easement.
Yes, the part that's blue, they legally own.
Okay, I didn't, I don't, we bought it that time, it was just easement. I want to know if they updated it.
They must have, because that's what the county says.
And does, does my motion also need to include you reaching out, just for clarity's sake?
Not really.
You don't need to.
I'll just, I'll just do that, for whoever I can find a phone number or a contact for.
Just someone who...
So if anybody knows anybody, please drop it off, so I have a contact. Well, I do, too. I know Sheely's a no.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is another item on our agenda, so yes, would you make a motion? Or somebody want to make a motion?
Oh, number 11.
To direct me to do that?
Motion to reach out to property owners between city limits and Sheely, Deegan, to consider both.
And the title.
Well, and you know, with the title, so you'll, you'll take it to your board, and then get something put together to come in a application.
Any discussion?
See, that, I mean, once again, that does create issues if Krugs would want to, because...
Yes.
We're creating lots of, right? Just like in both Helms properties, with annexing, Mahoney would have to.
Yeah, something would happen with that.
We have islands, so...
Island, and we could volunteer at that time.
Yeah, and there's a separate procedure for that, 80, 20. Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah.
I don't think so.
All right, any other discussion?
I'll second.
Oh, was Adam? Okay, did some, Adam did second it?
Yeah.
Thank you. I got it, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number 12. Board of Adjustment, okay, so there's some backstory to this. We have a citizen that wanted to do something on their property. They needed to go to the Board of Adjustment to get permission. Board of Adjustment met, we thought everything was fine. Turns out, city code requires four Board of Adjustment members in order to have a meeting to vote on something, and we only had three. So, it was pointed out that we did not meet the city requirements for the Board of Adjustment. So that motion and vote has since been voided. Chris has kindly offered to join the Board of Adjustments, so we can have the four that the city requires, so that the citizen can have their meeting and do what they need to do on their property. That's why he's in there. There's also further items, because we found they were not in compliance with the state code. The state code only requires three members, because we have a five-person board. So, we do need to go through the steps to update our ordinance to comply with state code, but that's going to take longer. Putting Chris on the Board of Adjustments would get the citizen done much quicker as we go through all of the public hearings to update our code.
Motion, we place Chris Taylor on the Board of Adjustments.
Thanks, Matt.
Second.
Was it, Cody, correct?
Yeah.
Kurt or Cody?
Cody.
Cody. Uh, any discussion? Can I get a roll call please?
Klein?
Aye.
Peenick?
Yeah, okay.
Peenick?
Aye.
Pujo?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Stay?
Aye.
Thank you.
14.
14, yeah.
Yeah, really, yeah.
Consideration of the second reading of ordinance, I'm in the city code chapter for planning and zoning. This is the one we've been talking about for a while, to bring the number of members from seven to five.
Motion placed on second reading, second.
And Kurt, Kurt. Discussion? Can I get a roll call please? Peenick?
Aye.
Pujo?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Stay?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
If council were so inclined, they could waive the reading of the third ordinance at this time.
Motion we waive during.
Second.
Discussion? Can I get a roll call please?
Pujo?
Aye.
Roder?
Aye.
Stay?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Peenick?
I'm sorry.
Uh, so now we have to do the third reading, okay. Uh, can I get a motion for the third reading of that ordinance?
Motion placed on final reading, second.
Discussion? Can I get a roll call please?
Roder?
Aye.
Stay?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Peenick?
Aye.
Pujo?
Aye.
Alright, so 17 is what I was talking about, the Board of Adjustments, where we're off from what the state says. So if council does want to comply with state, we do need to go through the public hearing process to update the ordinance.
Yeah, so I did, I did talk to the city attorney about it because I was, I've worked for a city that's had a five-member Board of Adjustment and nowhere to, you know, with only three members, city have seated and have held meetings. And so I was interpreting that section of the city's code as something totally else, something else. And then found in the state code that Board of Adjustments can be made up of five, seven, or nine members. And since city, Swisher code is a five-member board, state code then also says that in order to conduct business or vote, only three members of a five-member board need to be present in order to, obviously three is a quorum on a five. So again, just, the, the city adminis, I'm sorry, city attorney did make the recommendation that we, our city code should mirror state code in this because Board of Adjustment is a final vote, a final board, and it's, it's established by Iowa code.
So since this is gonna be an amendment, you can't take action tonight, right?
No, correct.
Set the public hearing.
You have to set a public hearing in order to amend that section of the code.
Do we currently with the appointment of Chris now have five?
No, four.
We only have four on the board?
Which would be very nice if we had five, so we should be out there talking.
Okay, so we do have.
And there still is a vacancy, but again, with four members, if one cannot make the meeting, it's nice to be able to conduct business with a quorum of the Board of Three.
Right.
So.
Considering how infrequently Board of Adjustment needs, yeah. But generally, the citizen wants things to move promptly. If we can find three people to meet, it's gonna help that citizen, yeah.
Motion to set public hearing for Monday, April 8th.
Second round, Mike? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? 19, it's the, if you didn't get your property tax assessment in the mail, I got mine up Friday. It'll probably show up in your mailbox this week. These are the examples that they sent to us. There's also a website the citizens can go on. Can we get that posted on our website or what? If you have questions, go to.
Yeah, I just thought that this is important for the council to review and see because if you do get questions from residents on what all that meant, you know, this is pretty helpful and the Iowa Department of Management had sent it out. So that way, if I get questions, I can help and you all too, so.
Any questions? 20 is set date for a public workshop, open house, Public Works is out today, otherwise he would've been here. But does anybody have a specific date they want? I know Cody was talking about we had an sign done before.
Yeah, so I did reach out to Carl Sebeck today. He's gonna be stopping out to look at like a similar signage as, that's on the library, just to give him some reference. But I told him to then take a look at the shop space to see how much space he has to work with on that sign. Any other fabricators, sign makers that you think that we should reach out to? Because obviously we have to put this on bid. But I, I think it is important that we do have at least a sign on a city building.
Put out a bid, you have to, you have to.
Well.
So you gotta have.
But when we did the sign, the welcome sign, we didn't have a drawing or anything. We basically just asked them to mock something up.
It wasn't, was that because it wasn't a guarantee that we were going to use their design? It was just suggestions?
Do you remember how that process went like? I think Tony just reached out to some companies as to just mock up a welcome sign. But we had like multiple. Yeah.
But then it never officially went out to bid to make a welcome sign.
People had been there, they were on the specs.
What, specs like, oh, it's like eight by 10 or, you know, four by eight.
Some kind of design because you probably know which one to pick.
City and Swisher Public Works, what, I mean, what, how, how detailed of a designer are you talking?
Well, I think what they were kind of going off of was our current signs out there about size wise. But as far as what they were showing us, it was like a different, different communities, what they had for different signs and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, this is just.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah.
Man, I think that's what Carl does, is metal type signs, so.
He's got a block and table to cut them out probably, doesn't he?
Well, and I know IPI does it too, which is, you know, a governmental entity. I don't know if you want me to reach out to them just for comparison.
So to see our signs.
Yeah, see our signs, yeah, I don't know.
Good, it would be kind of nice to have different entities, maybe give us an idea of cost and stuff. So yeah, maybe we could just reach out to those companies and tell them kind of what we're thinking.
Shoot me a, a number for Carl, will ya?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll probably, they'll probably want, know size first.
Oh, absolutely. And what, and what they want written.
See, that's what I don't. There's a lot of space on that building. I mean, it's up to this size.
You don't want to block the windows.
I think, you know, a sign of this size is probably what we're after. So if we know the dimensions of this, I think it should be a comparable size sign, you know?
Okay. So do you want to set a date or do you want to wait until we know when we're gonna get a sign?
Let's wait a meeting and figure out where the sign thing goes, I think.
Put all the message up.
We can figure it out in two weeks.
Yeah, I think in two weeks we could at least get it. And if they tell us, oh, it's a month to get the sign done, two months, you know, we can set it for men.
Right.
Or something, but, yeah. I think no action at this time.
So I heard Carl's, that IPI and CR signs, was there another place mentioned on the side of the building?
Signs Incorporated.
Signs Incorporated.
And obviously, there's Nesper too, they advertise it all the time. Nesper's huge.
Okay, well, there's five.
Might as well get as many as you can.
Sure.
Yeah, because you might only get two of them to even respond back.
Yep, 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 yeah.
Okay, alright, we're at the end of our agenda, if somebody wanted.
Motion to adjourn, second.
I was in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned at 7:08.